Justin?
There we go. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
You're not old enough to remember, but I just tell them to keep putting money in.
I would all just, I would all just call collect. Somebody sounds like Darth Vader.
Cost meeting order. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Supervisor Wright is joining us by phone tonight. Due to a closed session earlier, the first item is number two tonight on citizen concerns. Is there anyone to speak on an item not already addressed on the agenda? Hearing none. Move on to item three, which is approval of the agenda. I'll move it. Second by DeWitt. Hearing no discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Items four through 10 constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item four is approval of the minutes of the October 20th meeting. Item five is approval of the claims. Item six from Human Resources includes A, approval of the memorandum of personnel transactions, and B, authorization to initiate the hiring process. Item seven from the county auditor is to receive the county recorder's report of fees collected. Item eight from Board Administration includes A, approval of notice of property sale resolution for a parcel also known as 2224 West Palmer Avenue for Tuesday, November 10th at 4:35 PM, and B, approval of a notice of property sale resolution for parcel also known as 111 and a half 23rd Street for Tuesday, November 10th at 4:37 PM. And item C, approval of notice of property sale resolution for parcel also known as 4425 Central Street for Tuesday, November 10th at 4:39 PM. Item nine from the county attorney is approval of the appointment of Charles Hertz to the Civil Service Commission. And item 10 from Secondary Roads County Engineer Mark Nera is approval of utility permit for installation of new water line in County Right Way in Union Township for Cherokee Rural Water. Any questions on the consent agenda?
I'll move approval.
I'll second the motion by DeWitt. Hearing no discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Item 11 for Board Administration and Building Services for action is approval of schematic design plans for the Woodbury County Law Enforcement Center, which we have reviewed in closed session. And Kenny, would you like to provide a quick summary?
Sure. The schematic design for the new law enforcement center has been completed by Goldberg Architects in conjunction with many departments and individuals throughout the county. We think we have a very good design. The Woodbury County LEC Authority met in closed session and approved those schematic drawings earlier today. Woodbury County Board of Supervisors reviewed those plans in a closed session. Those were, those were done in a closed session manner to conceal confidential design drawings. That's why they were presented in closed session and now will be approved by the board in a open public forum. We couldn't share those documents with the general public just due to the needs for confidentiality of attention facility. Larry Goldberg is here with us this evening and I'll ask him to come up and say a few words. This is, the board needs to approve this basically because of the agreement between the law enforcement center authority and Woodbury County. It's required in that agreement. This is just the SD phase of those drawings. We will also need to repeat this process when we get to the construction design phase and that is the, that is when the design of the entire facility is complete and ready for bidding. So we'll be come back, be coming back to you again at that time. Larry Goldberg, if you'd like to come up and Shane Albrecht, who's the owner's representative, I'd like you to come up and answer any questions that the board might have.
Thank you, Lawrence Goldberg, Goldberg Group Architects. I will tell you as a benchmark, we're at about 270 gross square feet per bed. And given everything in that building, including five courts, we thought that was pretty compact. And we're pleased with the results and we, we're glad that you are too.
So I got a series of questions I just wanted to go over because we're in an open session that's on the record and we can have the public know. The plans that we're about to approve, do these meet the needs of our sheriff's office as requested in design?
Yes.
The attorney's office and PJ's requests?
Yes.
The city attorney's office and the city side of the authority?
Correct.
Sioux City Police Department, does it meet their needs as far as the Sally Port and protection?
Yes.
The ability to expand in the future?
It can in several directions supervisor, both incrementally and then wholesale up to a four pods totaling 872 beds of general population.
Does it meet the needs of the population for the jail that we have now plus whatever growth?
Yes.
And that's the main concerns that we had gone when we went through almost every city council in the, in the county and questions and concerns that were brought up. We wanted to meet those needs. We want to make sure we don't make the mistakes of, you know, just 30 some years ago and have a jail that'll last us a little longer than that. And when we have future needs and expansion available, we'll have that on the plan for this existing facility. So.
You will.
Thank you.
Any other questions for me? Larry's done a great job with the design and answering the que- Shane Albrecht, sorry. Any other questions for me? Larry's done a great job with the design and everything else.
Educated guess on start date as far as construction?
Our target, so our target is to have these plans done with CDs by February 16th. Bids back, bids back, I think it's March, like March 10th. And construction starting around April Fools, it's about April 1st is our targets.
Interesting date.
I think it might be an April 2nd.
Sounds good. Great work.
Then it would be an eight, about an 18 month construction schedule, which, so if everything hits its target, this new facility would be finished October, October of 2022.
It's an honor to be a part of the board with all of you on the board with me when this is, when this is completed. I'll move approval.
Second.
Second by Potabom. Any other discussion?
It's been four years in the making.
That's right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Thank you. Item 12 from the weed commissioner. Mr. Jepson is to receive and approve the annual report of the county weed commissioner.
You guys all have a copy of that, right?
Yes, we do.
Any questions?
Other than what are all these things?
Some days I wonder, I promise.
They're weeds.
Seems like everybody, every once in a while you get a picture, someone will send you a picture, what is this? Well, it's a plant that was dead a week ago. You know, it's like, well, that is a good question.
How does the spending on herbicides compare to last year?
Ah, they're up again. I mean, they, they go up every year. They're just, that's just one of the things that keeps happening. And some of your bigger chemical companies are monopolizing with, you know, it's getting to be where it's almost one company or two companies that you're buying chemical from. So they kind of have you a little bit cornered. There's, some of the older chemicals are cheapening up a little bit, but a while back we, we kind of decided that we were going to use some other chemicals and less ounces per acre. So we're still kind of headed that direction and it's been working. It's, it's been working good. You guys, we, we put a new spray system in that truck this year, on that truck. Karen put it up on a, it'll be up on the deal for us. It'll show you our GPS, what our GPS is doing for us now. So the old system, when I did spraying, I just jotted down what road I had drove down. I just highlighted it with a marker. That's, that's all I could do. This tells you, this shows on that map exactly where the herbicide was, was put. I mean, it, it shows everything. There's, there's no guessing if you sprayed there or not. I could drive up to that spot with either a landowner, department of bag, whoever I drive up with, I can show this. It's, it's really a neat concept. I mean, we didn't think that this is how this was going to come out, but Kyle at the engineer's office actually did some stuff for me yesterday and this morning and it came up way better than we thought it was going to. If we can go to the next page, Karen.
Red lines on the road is where it was leaking behind the truck as it went.
I think, I'm not sure. No, no, it wasn't. That's where I sprayed. So this is an overview of Wolf Creek Township. On the side, can you scroll up a little bit, Karen, please? On the side, it tells everything that on that job report. It, it shows, okay, so one thing that I haven't done yet, you see the weather? I have to, I have to download a weather app in there now, which I didn't know anything about this until I started, until I started getting further into the book. But now we can, we can put a, a weather app in there also. So it tells us what the wind was doing, humidity, everything. On the bottom, you can see the average speed through that township was 11.72 miles per hour while you're spraying. That product right there is your carrier, your water. That shows you how many acres we applied, 47 acres, and then total volumes of, of, how many gallons of water we used. Then the next one, Karen, if we scroll. This is, this is method, I believe. It will say method if you scroll a little bit further. Yes, product, no, it's escort, I'm sorry. That's just one of our carriers with our chemical that if we run into a lot of rush or something like that, any woody species for, for plants, it's, it's why that's on there. It shows we used, oh, I gotta look at that, just, that's 64... Okay, so that is a, that is a powder mixed into a slurry. So that, that is how many gallons of that I used. I'm gonna have to keep that back down. This is my, this is our main chemical that we're using right now on, on weeds. And if you scroll all the way down, it'll show that we used 355, 335 or 55?
Thirty-five.
On, on whole township. It's really a neat program. The further you get into it, it takes a long time to, it's, it's so fast. I mean, and I'm not familiar with, with that system yet. I mean, this is the first year we use it. So there's, there's a lot of learning to it. And there's, there's Raven that built her monitor, that made that, put that spray system together. They are very, like, they've got all kinds of YouTube videos, all kinds of, all kinds of support. I mean, they'll just keep showing you more stuff and, but it takes a lot of time to, to get through all that. It's, it's a very nice, very nice spray system. Works really good. See our supply up in Sioux Falls did it. If you call them with any trouble, they're on it right now. They'll put a Raven rep with you right away. They'll just, it's a neat system.
If there's any constituent concerns as far as, I don't know, someone says, I've been noticing more Russian knappweed in my area. I don't believe that you sprayed. Is this something that you can use to, or does that route through the county engineer's office?
That one?
Yep. Okay. So right there is Kelly, Kelly Conover's house yard. When I get to a house yard, it gets shut off. I, I, there, unless the landowner would come out and tell me that there's stuff in his ditch that he wants killed, I'll spray. But when I get close to anything like that, I'm shutting down because of a garden, of flowers. I just, I just try to steer clear. People do call me and, and talk to me about stuff that's in their yard and I will go look at it and, and try to identify it and, and give them a plan of attack with it as much as I can. Yeah, they just, it seems like all them calls are on Saturday and Sunday.
Yeah, so approximately, how many of those calls are you taking in a typical week?
How many calls are you taking a week? Are you taking? How many calls are you taking in a typical week?
With weed complaints or?
Everything.
Everything? You know, it depends. It depends. Sometimes you get four or five a week. Sometimes you get more than that. Sometimes you don't get any. I mean, it just goes, I get, I have one person that calls me two or three times a week and tells me where he's seen something. There's other people looking at me.
Yep.
Anything else?
Nope, not for me.
The system is really cool. It's gonna help us out tremendously. I mean, it's, it's amazing what it'll do. I hope I figure it all out.
It looks like a good way to, you know, respond to any concerns or document, really.
Yeah, I can drive up and tell you exactly what's wrong. It'd be even neater when we get the weather, the weather channel on there or the weather station on there. So that there's no way they can say, well, the wind was blowing 30 mile an hour when you went by there. Because when I get to 10 mile an hour, the wind is still on that worship.
I'll move to receive and approve the annual report.
Second. Motion by Potabom, second by Rattig. Mr. Jepson, under penalty of perjury, you, you promised that all of this is correct?
Yes, sir.
Very well. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, fellas.
Thank you.
All right, item 13, secondary roads. Your action includes A, approval of award for culvert outlet protection projects.
Mark Nera, Woodbury County Engineer. Got to get down to the right level here. First one is for the culvert outlet protection. We recommend award of that to Peterson Contractors for $135,052.
I'll move it.
Second, the motion by Rattig. Hearing no discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero.
One of the things I want to mention too is that we're getting assistance with this from the Hunger Canyons Alliance. We are one of the county members of the Hunger Canyons Alliance and following the flood, they were able to assist us with bringing some and matching some EWP money, emergency watershed protection money to help us pay for these projects.
Great. Item B is approval of award for bids on weir repairs.
We recommend award to Peterson Contractors Incorporated of Reinbeck for $179,385. The, the area where, where we were off and, and, and looking at what costs of these have been going for lately was on the de-watering.
So which one of these was, is, I don't remember Peterson being the lowest on both of them.
What happened was there was an error on one of the quotations. We were low unfortunately on the, on weir repairs.
Okay.
And we caught mathematical errors when we were looking at the bids. That's, just looking at them when I opened them, that's why I didn't recommend any awards because I saw some irregular, irregularities on the quotes just didn't look right at first. But again, after verifying the bids, Peterson's was the low bid for that project.
Okay.
Motion by Young, second by DeWitt. Hearing no discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero.
He's got the jug and he's just blowing it.
Item C is approval to receive bids for the culvert K264 replacement project.
Keith, we also did have a third project as well. We'll be coming back with a recommendation on that next week. And that was for the rip rattle along D12.
Okay.
That one, Peterson was not low bid.
Yeah, that was an excavation company or something, wasn't it? Like?
Ah, Lieber.
Lieber, yeah.
Was the, was red low.
Next is the quotes for our culvert replacement on Old Highway 20. First one is from Dixon Construction, Correctionville. Bid bond is included. Total bid price, $93,227.62. 9322762. Next is from LA Carlson. Bid price, $92,653.95. 9265395.
I recommend the board receive the bids and allow us to check them and make a recommendation.
I'll move to receive.
I'll second the motion by Rattig. Hearing no discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero.
Not too many times you see bids come in 570 bucks or whatever apart.
No action on item D. Item E is approval of a contract for FY21 gravel purchase.
The contract is with, sorry. With Hallack Construction. Total price, $123,750.
I'll move it.
Second, the motion by Rattig. Hearing no discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Item F is approval of contract for FY21 gravel haul.
This is hauls to our 10 stockpiles that are scattered throughout the county. This will be bringing material out of the railroad pit. Some of the material from our own gravel pit near the right pit, plus the 123,000 we just purchased to round out our needs for this year.
I'll move it.
I'll second the motion by Rattig. Any discussion? Any differences over last year on this one, Mark?
Yes, the price of gravel is getting higher. We, we had also taken quotes to have additional gravel crushed at the railroad pit. We were not satisfied with the price that we had. We're looking at re-letting that railroad pit crushing. Railroad pit's the one that lies up north of Correctionville. That's where we stockpile for District 2 Mobile and about half of District 3 Correctionville's gravel is located at that pit. They were looking at a, a price that we thought was very high. We're going to try and change our letting timing and see if we can get some of the other, I know they want to come Wildcat, but we want to get some more competition in bids. When we own the material, we feel we should get it for less than what we have to pay for it commercially. You know, we shouldn't end up having to pay them the royalty we're having to pay those commercial pits when we own the material. We should be able to get it cheaper than that. So again, we are going to be working on that for next year. We're also working with a new gradation that should give us a coarser product on the road, which is something we have tried to bid with us as well. That might have been part of the price increase, but it's kind of hard to evaluate that. So.
We have a motion, correct? Give me a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero.
Thank you very much.
All right, item 14, reports on committee meetings. Keith?
I did have a workforce development board meeting with our brand new board members, getting everybody into elected position, president, secretary, treasurer, and all those. So I guess that 100% attendance on the first meeting, that was really good. And that is moving along.
Great. Marty?
Third judicial district, we're discussing budget. The problem is, we, we can discuss it all we want, but it's not till the legislature convenes that we find out what they're going to do with it. So, but right now we're going with the status quo budget and even with, I think we have an alternate with a 3% cut just to wait, see what the legislature and the governor does. But, so we're kind of in a holding pattern, but we're at least in the discussion period.
Okay. Mr. Wright, any reports?
The CSN Snoop Out Silent Auction has started. That's an annual event to raise money for homeless awareness. There's some, there's a virtual auction going on right now. I will post something on, on my Facebook page for those that, that are interested in, in finding that. There's a number of things available. Sports apparel, any motorcycle jackets, memorabilia, memorabilia for the USS Sioux City, wine baskets and more. So they, they are able to typically raise quite a bit of money from that event every year. And they're wanting people to take a look. COVID's making everything tougher, just they're not as nearly visible as they are in years when COVID is not a factor.
Thank you.
Rocky?
Rolling Hill Governance Board Meeting tomorrow where we're going to be covering more CARES Act claims, submissions, and then, did I hear Mr. Malloy got finalized for his chief information officer?
Yeah, I saw that from the council's meeting, I believe, the past. So.
He said he went through some grueling business yesterday. So apparently he's approved.
I think he was just asked to explain himself.
They didn't understand what he was talking about, did they?
Maybe not. Actually, was that all? Good segue. Someone from the auditor's office want to break the good news on the CARES, CARES Act reimbursement?
Michelle Scaff, deputy auditor. We have been approved for the 1.3 plus million dollar reimbursement for the 25% of payroll. for the 25% of payroll for public safety and district health personnel. So we should be seeing those funds come in shortly. I've been working with Dennis. We're going to be breaking it out by funds so that the appropriate funds will get the dollars.
Excellent. Very good.
Good news on a Sunday.
Yes. Any other committee meeting reports? Item 15, any citizen concerns? Anybody on the phone? Are you able to see how many you're watching, Karen? You don't get to see that? All right.
She has a best security clearance.
She needs clearance. All right, well, item 16, any board concerns? No board concerns? All right, we're adjourned.